In shape or topography, but but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. So the hardship is owing to the shape factor, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. Because other lots similar in size to the proposed two lots throughout the neighborhood, there are. Some are pre-existing non-conforming and some are new in cluster zoning. And then unlike the cluster zoning, there would be no impact on infrastructure. The proposal does not affect the zoning district as it is similar to other lots within this zoning district. And then I looked at B3, which is desirable relief may be granted without either. And so A is substantial detriment to the public good. And there will be no detriment to the public good and no impact on the infrastructure. And then B nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this bylaw. And the intent and purpose of the bylaw is to not overbuild or over intrude on a butters. And there are similar lot sizes within the neighborhood and zoning district. So the other thing that I added to this is, well, I added some of that, but the bonus to the town would be additional tax revenue. No impact on infrastructure. You'd be supporting residents who have been part of the community for 33 years. As a teacher, a coach over here basketball and taxpayer. And then furthermore, you'd be supporting the resident's son and girlfriend. I don't mean you're paying for them, but you'd just be supporting them, uplifting them. They grew up in the town, attended the public schools and are trying to pay down large student debt. Right now they're paying like 1,400 a month rent plus utilities. And this will be substantially less because we plan on just getting a two or three bedroom modular home. Just, you know, we're not getting builders. It's just a modular home and drop. And the other thing which I think is already in everything that the lawyer did is the only, the only variance we need really is for the area. Because on either side of the building and it does look, it's oversized in the drawing that you got because they didn't come out physically to, to examine the land. They said they would do that after. So the structure that you see on the new lot is not that big. It's, it's going to be small. It's, it's not going to be a huge house. I know that somebody was concerned about that. So it won't be near the abutter. The abutter on the corner is fine with it. And that's, that's it. I think I covered everything. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I guess, um, so Jim, I, it would, it would be technically two variances, right?
And there are, there are two. And I was looking at those today and I didn't see any difference between them. I read both of them and they look identical. But I guess one is for one lot, one is for the other lot. I don't know.
Yeah. Is that correct, Jim?
So you have two variances before you this evening. One is for lot area, which is the, the new lot that they, that Mr. and Mrs. Ferman are looking to create is undersized for the zoning district. In addition, the current parcel that they own now that they're looking to subdivide from is non-conforming. So it's, it's too small for the current zoning district that it resides in today. So you're furthering the non-conformity by reducing it further. So those are the two separate, they are very similar, but yeah, they are, it's very much two separate variances.
Okay.
I know one of the issues that I would have in particular is that it's owned agricultural. Is that correct, Jim?
Correct. So yes, the, the existing zoning is 200 feet of frontage and 80,000 square feet.
Yeah, which the lot, the current, your current lot area is, is half.
That's because it's non-conforming. It's a little bit more than half. It's over an acre.
So it would be, it would be a substantial, if we rented the variance, it would be a substantial variance from what's, what's allowed, what's owned.
It would, but it would be similar to lots all around us.
And I guess the other question I would have is that from the last meeting we had, so.
It's so nice to be able to hear you because I couldn't hear you guys last time.
Oh, okay. Did, so I guess the one question I had was that the board strongly kind of recommended towards look, doing some research into a family apartment. Has there been any thought into that or any investigation?
We've, we've thought about it. That would involve additional cost because our septic system is over on the other side of the house. And there's actually not as much land over on the other side of the house. And the leaching field is over on the other side of the house.
Okay. And then I guess with the, as far as the actual criteria for a variance, then for A, you would say the
Shape factor.
Or I guess you'd say for the, for B1, the hardship would, would be you, you're saying owing to your son and his girlfriend, their, their debt.
Yeah, I'm telling you, six figures right now. And he's the, the lawyer misspoke. He hasn't even been to law school yet. He's working and, and he's got about a year left in college. She already graduated with a degree in biology, but then she went and got her masters in nursing. And so between the two of them, we're talking substantial student loan. Like, like most kids.
Yeah, no, I could definitely understand that. Um, so I don't know. I mean, certainly for a variance, the, we have a high threshold that you have to meet to, to grant a variance. So usually, I guess the, the question I would have, and I'd raise it to the, open it up to the rest of the board would be, you know, does this meet all those criteria? Specifically relating to maybe B2 for hardship owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of the land.
And so that was the shape. Because we have so much frontage. We have two full houses and lots across from us. And then we have a partial over there and a partial lot over there. That's how long we are.
Yeah, which, but still, I guess your, your lot area is still relatively smaller for the zone district.
And there are many.
I understand with the other smaller lots, but we also have to take into account where a lot of the lots might just be pre-existing non-conforming lots.
It's a mix.
Yeah. So I guess I'd, I'd, I'm going to open it to see how the rest of the board feels.
Okay. I'll mute myself because otherwise I'll pipe in.
But you don't have to, you don't have to mute yourself.
Well, I'm a teacher. I'm used to butting in.
So I don't know, maybe Art or Brian or Peter. What are your thoughts as far as the meeting the criteria for a variance?
I'm, I would like to say that it does meet all of the criteria, but one of the issues, talking about lot shape factor, but usually lot shape factor is in consideration of a forked shot shaped lot of a, or a lot that is irregular in shape. And this particular lot, it doesn't, doesn't actually fit that description.
Yeah, that was, I guess that was my kind of feeling. And I guess as far as B, the, the third criteria, I mean, I would open it to, I think Joe Chappie, is he the, the abutter across the street?
Yeah, I'm directly across the street.
So I guess that, um, because again, I know we want to be sensitive to, you know, what you're trying to do, but then we also have to weigh it with the, the concerns and the, you know, needs are of the neighbors.
Now, I know the butter, a butter to the left on the corner is, is totally fine with this.
But you're also going to be leaving trees and a barrier between the new construction and his property, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the intent to clear, basically the only clearing we're planning on, if at all feasible, would be for the house lot itself, not for the entire lot.
So the other thing I'd like to mention is that although their frontage does cover two properties, mine and the one next door, they're very long. So I have less frontage, but much more area. So just the different shapes of the lot, I suggest, you know, maybe we look at that.
What does that have to do with it?
If I was watching. The implication that, you know, your house is as wide as two other lots, your, your lot is as wide as two other lots.
We have the frontage.
The frontage, but not in size.
Not in area.
Correct.
Right.
I mean, and maybe Jim, you could kind of give us some kind of more kind of insight into, because for the criteria for the hardship owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of such land. I guess this is just a pre-existing property. So I don't know how that would owe to a hardship as far as wanting to subdivide it to make a new property.
Yeah. I mean, it's obviously these three conditions are up to the board's interpretation to the best you can do and using past practice. I think you guys hit it, hit it on the head for the most part in terms of, you know, we're, we're talking about three acres shy, but you know, and, and Jay brought up a good point about there are some neighboring lots, a few cluster developments nearby that are smaller in size. As you guys know, with a cluster development though, there is some trade-offs that the town does, you know, they allow for smaller lots in certain zoning districts and in turn receive, you know, ample open space, for instance.
The house to the left, the abutter to the left is also smaller than both of these lots. And that's not cluster zoning. It's pre-existing.
Right. So, so my, my only, the only statement I would say of just, just a little bit erring in caution is simply that, you know, the, that we have three zoning districts for residential purposes, residential suburban and agriculture. An agricultural zone is the largest zoning district. So that is the two acres and, and 200 linear feet of frontage. So I simply would just, you know, certainly take that into consideration, but ultimately it's up to the board's interpretation of these, of these three. If you believe they meet each and all, all three, then, you know, you certainly can have that discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
I, you know, we have an existing non-conforming lot as it is. So I'm having a hard time with hardship on subdividing it and making this, the existing lot even smaller. The hardship to me is not due to land size, soil conditions, shape, type, topography. It's being self-created to create a second lot.
Yeah.
I, I have, I have an issue with the hardship issue and that's why I really do.
I also, I mean, I would have concerns too about setting precedent and that.
Exactly.
That they're doing it for their son, but I guess other, you know, if someone else, another, you know, homeowner was to want to subdivide their land, what's to stop them from kind of doing that and then doubling the value and selling off the other parcel?
I don't disagree. I mean, you know, we've all, well, not all of us, but have children who've gone through college and struggling and you know, I can't subdivide my lot either and make that hardship, you know?
Okay. In the, excuse me, in the agricultural zone, right? We have to have at least a 200 foot frontage. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. And 80,000 square feet.
And 80,000 square feet. Okay. So existing lots in this neighborhood could have the 200 foot frontage. But if they tried to subdivide, they would have, they couldn't subdivide the frontage. They could subdivide if this, all this fear that they're going to put another house behind them. I'm not sure I'm following that we're going to be setting a precedent.
Isn't it that if, if they had, if you had the 80,000 square foot, you could do two houses, right? Two residences?
No, no. And for an agricultural zone, 280,000 is, is your, your standard for one single family home at, at this time. Obviously the zoning has changed over years, but at this present time, it's 280.
Can I just ask, you know, when I look at B3 and I look at the intent and purpose. The intent and purpose of the bylaw is to not overbuild, isn't it? And to not intrude on a butters. The intent and purpose isn't just for developers, is it?
No, yeah, I mean, it is, um, which is why, I mean, there, there is some kind of gray area in language.
Yeah.
It's kind of just to keep the general, I guess not to overbuild, but also to keep the general zoning characteristics. And also just to keep the, the character of neighborhoods and also to weigh kind of the, the public good and also.
And the fact that there's other houses and lots similar to these two proposed lots? That does it. How does that change the character?
If I was walking down the street here and there was another house between our house and the other.
And the house on the corner.
A wooded lot. I would have no idea the depth of that lot. And walking by, it would appear that it fits the street scene. Didn't just drop out of the sky and look out of place.
Well, I guess, I guess part of the, I guess part of the issue I think is that a variance that we, we do have a high threshold that you have to meet to, to grant a variance. And also that it seems like the, the distance to make up is so great. That you're already at, right? It's 40,000 square feet is the area, the, the lot and that.
No, it's 50 something. It's, we have 50, 50 something thousand square feet.
That's a grant the variance. I mean, Jim, what would the, the variance, because you have to word it in the positive, right? What would be the granting of the first variance for a lot area? How much lot area would we have to grant in the variance? Do you know?
Uh, let's see. So you're referring to the lot area for the, the new, the new lot. So they're creating a new lot that was, actually I don't have it in front of me. What, what's the?
I believe it's, I, one of them is 28 and one of them is 24 maybe or 26. Jim's getting the paperwork.
I guess I'm just.
The larger of the two is where we've already got our house.
So you're talking about.
And the other one.
16 or 20,000.
The one that we want to create is still larger than the lot on the corner. Next to it, abutting it.
But I guess, I think.
28,337 is lot A, which is where our house is. And lot B is 23,811. Except for the size of this is way off.
And so you're, you're approximately about 20,000 square feet of lot area that you would be providing a variance for. And then in the other one, you would be altering a non-conforming parcel by an additional, well, however large this one is, so an additional 24,811 or 23,811.
Right. Correct.
Which I guess, I mean, I would tend to agree kind of with what Peter's saying is you already have a non-conforming lot and you would seem to be substantially increasing the non-conformity.
Well, isn't it non-conforming because it was here before you zoned it agricultural?
No, that's true, but I think generally we, we don't wish to further non-conformities.
Yeah.
Especially to such a high degree is what I would.
But then the house on the corner is non-conforming and all the cluster zoning houses are non-con, are, are similar in size.
Well, the cluster development is a whole nother animal. So I think that can be kind of taken out of the equation because.
But it is, it is realigning an agriculturally zoned district. And so it is, it is pertinent because it's our neighborhood. When we first moved here, there were only five houses on this street. And now there's 13, then there's Matty Way, and now behind us, there's Linda Way. And Matty Way and Linda are cluster zoning and several of those lots are no larger than what we're proposing.
Is the cluster development, Jim, is that, is that a 40B?
No, that's a special permit through the planning board.
Yeah. Cause I mean, I guess to me, I would not, you know, I, I think that really shouldn't be taken into consideration because the cluster development takes, um, you know, it doesn't have to follow the zoning guidelines, which is what makes it a cluster development. So it really is not in character with the rest of, like Jim was saying, where if it's zoned agricultural, it's really meant to be residential with the most area for housing, for single family housing.
There's probably only one, two, three, four. There's probably only four homes out of 40 that have the two acres.
Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
One of the things is that you have to meet criteria of those three bullets. And our hands are tied. We, we, we have to go by the bylaws. We can't just discriminately or indiscriminately make changes within the bylaws. So we, we are, we have to work within the screen, just within the restraints of the bylaws. So it makes it really difficult for us to, even though, you know, that you're bringing up points that sound reasonable, they don't fall under the guidelines of the bylaw.
And so which part of the bylaw, um, you know, when I look at B1, B2 and B3, what aren't we meeting?
Well, one would be the lot shape factor. And then the other one, uh, it could be, uh, could, could be discussed with the, with the financial issues.
Okay. I didn't know whether to put that down or not.
But again, we have to go, we have to go by what, what is written in the bylaws.
Right. And the lawyer, you know, who came the last time and we just can't afford him. He, um, he put shape factor in B1 and B2. You know, if you look at his application.
My, my, now that you bring up the attorney, I would, would you like to share with us what your discussion that you had with him and what his, what his recommendation may have been?
Before.
After the meeting.
After the meeting, the next day, he said that he felt from the very beginning that you, you guys were going to say no. And we felt that, we felt like.
We felt he wasn't prepared.
And he.
The information that he gave, the feedback that he gave to us after the meeting didn't follow through for him having any preparation for what he should have been expecting to occur.
But he would have known what, he should have known what you guys would be asking. And we didn't feel, I mean, if you remember, you'd kind of threw the ball to us.
Right. Well, and, and that still goes, I, I think you're talking about withdrawing without prejudice. So that, if you withdraw without prejudice, depending on how the board is, if you feel that the board is going to vote in favor.
Right.
That's one thing. But if you, and judging from my experience, it cannot be that way. And if you withdraw without prejudice, it's not going to prevent you from coming back at a later date. If you get denied by, for this.
Two years. Totally understand.
Okay.
Cause it sounds like, it sounds like to me the biggest holdup with the board and I mean, myself too, I could see the, the financial hardship, but I think the B2, the hardship owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape or topography of the land.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I heard the comment of a hardship. My first thought is, is it's not their hardship, it's their kid's hardship. And again, I know them, I'm not saying nothing about that, but by granting them a hardship, it's generating a hardship for me and my family as well.
Which is what we as a board have to weigh those considerations to.
So like I'm saying, I, that's, that's, that's all I, you know, that's all I'm saying is that their, their hardship is their hardship, but by granting this, you're also creating a hardship for me and my family.
So what we do with our land is, is causing you hardship?
Yes. By putting a house there, you're going to cause me hardship.
Do you know something? Your house wasn't there when we lived here. Your house was built.
It doesn't matter. Every project that's happened in that area is just flooded by property again and again, and it's gotten worse.
No, your house flooded when they built the foundation.
I'm just saying that this is, that's not going to improve it.
So it was your builder. It wasn't really the neighborhood and houses going in because you flooded in the very beginning.
Regardless of that, I'm just suggesting that that's going to increase a hardship that doesn't need to be increased.
Okay. That's something the board will consider.
Yeah. And just, just try to keep, um, just try to, um, speak to the board and not to each other, just to keep.
Yep. Yes, sir.
You're correct. But no, I mean, I, that is a good point. And that's what, those are what we have to weigh that it's not that we're not understanding of, of their, you know, needs and that, you know, it's a good thing they're trying to do to help their son out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Build them a home. And, but we do have to weigh that with, like you're saying, the impact to the neighborhood and to neighbors.
Yeah.
Has everybody spoken? I don't think everybody's spoken, just as far as, so we have a feel of what we should do.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, so I, um, so Jim Ray hasn't called on yet, right? I don't see him on the.
No, I think the only, only other member, Brian Salisbury, I don't know if you've had any, any input, but that's, I think that's the last board member.
Oh, I, you know, like I said at the last hearing, I, you know, I don't think there's anybody on the board that doesn't want to grant you the relief that you're asking for and and kind of just look the other way with regard to what the, the zoning requirements are. But we're left with what the zoning that has been in place for decades now. And we are tasked with sort of following the rules and, and trying to fit requests like yours in applying your facts to those with the bylaws. And sometimes it just doesn't fit. And this is one of the cases is, you know, and as, and as much as I would like to help you, help your, your son, it's just, it's just not there. And we can't say, well, you know, we'll just not do it this time, or we can't judge the, the neighbor's lot only to the extent, you know, your neighbor's lots are only are considered to the extent that what you're asking for would or would not fit in to what's already there. And I think it would probably fit in. But there's no other, um, there's really no other basis for this variance. And I, and I wish there was, to be honest with you, but it, so it's up to you what, how you want to proceed. I don't know if anything's going to change in two years, but at least you keep your options open. You can, we can, um, I think the, the direction of the board is that we'd likely not approve your request for the variance. And then you would have the opportunity to appeal that to a court and then you could litigate that. And maybe, maybe our decision would be overturned. So that's another option that you have as well.
Well, um, financially, that's not in the.
Yeah. So.
We haven't had good luck with lawyers so far.
No one does. So.
My attorney.
Sorry.
So I, I, it's entirely up to you what you'd like to do, we try to, try to find the solutions with.
Now, we can still cut down that, we can cut down all the trees on that lot, right, I mean, it is our land. So even if we aren't granted, we can give ourselves more open space, correct?
So there, you can certainly cut down trees on your lot. When you are stumping, removing the, the bottoms of the trees and changing the topography. If it exceeds over, well, I guess it won't, it won't come into play for your lot because. When it exceeds over an acre, then you have to file with the, the planning board.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, so.
Yeah, Peter, good.
Pretty sure Jason sat in the meeting last month too, I'm sure he has any comments.
Oh, yeah, Jason.
Yeah, Jason.
Hi, how you doing? I'm an ultimate member of the board.
Hi, Jay.
Hi, nice to meet you, I, I kind of feel along the same lines as everyone else, you know, I believe the. Shape of the lot is, you know, not anything like, it's like a pork chop or. Something out of the ordinary, it's pretty, pretty square on each side, so.
So where do I find the definition, I mean, what is a shape factor, did I not get it right? I mean, what, what, what is the definition of the shape factor?
So I can, if I can answer that, Brian, so people, people have come before us. With variances and they have. Oddly shaped lots. A rectangular lot is as standard as it comes. Your lot is, has a frontage, but a lot of people come to us and say, gee, we wish we had more frontage and they seek a variance for that. So it's just, you know, triangles, circles. The portions of it jut out in one direction or not, but, I mean, it, it's, it's. It's specific to each application, but there, there is no such thing as a precedent in this kind of situation, it's always. What is the unique circumstances of this particular property?
Okay, and so that's where we said that it had enough frontage for two lots.
Right, so I mean, people own property that you could do a lot of things with, but it's just not in that zoning, zoning area. So the, the relief that you're seeking is exceptional. And it's, it's a high hurdle for us to, to just sort of wave away and look the other way, so to speak. Because it is such a significant change to the area in which you live and other people have to follow those. Rules and you're saying, hey, I'm different, I'm special because of these circumstances, which I think. Based on the conversations that we've had, I don't think that the board necessarily agrees in this case. I wish, I wish it could be different, to be honest with you, but.
We don't think we're different or special.
I know you don't, but different and special in terms of your, the shape or topography of your land.
Well, there's no other lot in this neighborhood that has the frontage that we have, so in that sense. That's. Why we presented it as such.
Understood.
Yeah. Well, so I guess this gives you a general feel for kind of what, how the board is leaning.
Sure, I guess we're going to have to.
Because I guess. Because I guess the other thing, you know, and I know that Jim.
It's zoned agricultural, so we can raise chickens over there.
Well, I know that Jim said that he spoke to you about this too, though, is that. A lot of times with the variance also being a high threshold, we also like to see that you explore other. Possibilities and from the last meeting, I mean, it seems like it would be a perfect situation to look into a family apartment.
Unfortunately, you know. When you were in your mid. Upper twenties. Did you want to live in the same house as your parents?
No, that's true, but I think.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, and, and the, this house is rather large, we've added on, we added on a second floor, we added on a room. So making this house any larger just doesn't make sense. I mean, we've got six bedrooms and three bathrooms. A finished room downstairs, a living room and a room near the pool. It's, it just doesn't make sense to make this larger, I don't know. And I think it will cost us more because of the septic and the leaching field.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think you can get the general consensus from the board is that we're definitely. It's not that we're not sympathetic to what you're trying to do and we wish we, we could help.
Yeah, well, I was hoping, you know, the fact that there was no impact on the infrastructure, you would get more taxes.
But those aren't, but those aren't the criteria that we need to evaluate, so we, we got to call a ball a ball and a strike a strike. And we can't kind of look at other reasons to either deny or grant.
I guess I looked at B1, B2 and B3 with my eyes. My interpretation was different than yours, that's why I was asking for the definition of the shape factor. Because there's so many lots that are the same size as are proposed. But we get it and we will withdraw, right? Are we having them vote? No, we'll, we'll withdraw.
Like to withdraw without prejudice, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Affirmative.
Okay, yeah, we, again, we're, it's, it's a, it's a great thing that you were trying to do. And that you're trying to help your son, and I certainly understand student loan, you know.
Brian, you just need to vote to accept that withdrawal, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Motion to, motion to accept the withdrawal.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Yeah, we wish you the best of luck and unfortunately, we wish that we could have helped you, but.
Yeah, we looked at other towns and other towns are a little bit more lenient than Bellingham.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, bye. Okay, next item on the agenda is continuation of Lakeview Estates, I'll hand it over to Peter.
Thanks, Brian, Jim, what do we have tonight, sir?
All right, this evening, we have the continuation of the conference permit for Lakeview Estates, I did see Angela Caporti has sent an email. Six month request, is that right, Angela? I, I'm sorry, I just, I just pulled it up right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's all I got for you, Peter.
Yeah, no, sorry, not used to this job, guy. So we're looking for a six month over one month. A particular reason why, I mean, because right now we got nothing going on. With the hopes of for the next month, so we can get you guys rolling again.
Just my standard request, really, wishful thinking.
I would think that a one month would suffice again.
Yeah, I mean, Angela, in, in all fairness, I mean, we would love to have a lot of things changed quickly and get you back to building and getting your project rolled. So I mean, if we can come back, you know, in a month and hopefully something has changed, that's my opinion. Brian, you have any thoughts?
No, I thi, I think one month is, is probably the best. Yeah, so if, if no one else has any other comments differently, I'll move to continue the hearing.
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but things have changed or, you know, things are progressing, I don't know how much discussion you are inclined to get into. But, you know, progress is being made on the NOLI front.
That's, that's something to be discussed with the, the, oh, God, Conservation Commission at this point. Brian, you want to make a motion on the one month or?
That would be January 7th.
Okay, so I'll move to continue the hearing until January 7th.
Second.
All's available.
Aye.
Aye.
It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And then I don't believe we have in our packets the minutes of November 5th, 2020, so we'll get those to you for the next one. Unless you guys do have them, I don't have them.
No.
We have them.
Do you have them?
I think so.
Yeah.
I read something.
That's not been anything.
I don't know.
I don't see anything in my emails.
I'd like to make sure we, I haven't had a chance to look those over, even if I did get them, so I'd like to wait till next month for those.
I hope I wasn't hallucinating, but I.
I don't know, Brian.
You don't have your mask on, Brian.
It was, it was an email from Laura.
That's all I have for you this evening, guys.
Okay, I guess, yeah, why don't we just wait then until next month, I guess, to review the minutes, make sure everyone gets a chance to take a look at them.
I want you to close. Everyone else's.
Motion to close the meeting?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, yeah, see Laura sent a text chat.
Or email.
November 24th.
Could you send them again for me, Laura, please?
A few weeks ago.
Yeah, it was too long, though.
We got to check our emails.
We'll get them back out to you guys, though, don't worry.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Hey, guys, I'm out of here, heading south.
Good luck.
Merry Christmas, everybody, you too, Tim.
Holidays.
Bye.